I had it sorted.
I want to try by the door. Sorry? I had it sorted.
It's too warm back here, you can crack that door open a little bit.
Uh, you want me to fire off Sharon's air conditioner?
It is on.
It's on.
Row call.
Jim, Heather.
Here.
Uh, Deb.
Here.
Lisa.
Here.
Julie.
Here.
Fran.
Here.
And myself.
Okay, report on the executive session on July 3rd, 2021. No decision has been made yet. I have on here comments from the chairman. Now, when Linda resigned, they put me on as chairman. Am I a chairman of the board? That's who put me in.
We can't really care about.
The board put me in as chairman and get on. I did the best that I, you know, could do. So, uh, I'm going to be stepping down as chairman. And, uh, some things that I've noticed over the last year that Fran Gustafson has done a upstanding job as far as as a coordinator. I mean, I work away from home, I've got a mother to take care of, I've got two houses to take care of. I mean, he's on. And, uh, I would like to make a motion to put Fran Gustafson on his chair as the J. Township water coordinator. I would like to make that motion. I was just wondering if I could have a second.
Have a second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All vote. So Gustafson, is this now?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, Gus.
Okay, meeting's open.
Fran, you got a report on the executive session at the county for the meeting?
Any answers on the executive session?
No, we did the July 29th.
Okay, all right.
July 1st, I know.
You got the minutes of July 1st, 2021.
We did that one, we did that one.
And you got the August 15th, 2021.
No, the executive session.
The executive session before we.
Oh, before we come in here for the lawyers?
Yes.
Introduce Megan.
This is Megan, our attorney, right here. Say hi to everybody. We sat here and we discussed it, it was a consent form with her, and we went over the pros and the cons, and, uh, what they have took out and what were left with. And so the board, uh, we sat and discussed, should we sign, should we not? And, uh, we actually sat down and asked our attorney to give us about 30 more days because we are enlightening to hire a new operator that we just, uh, interviewed here. And, uh, it looks.
Can you speak up a little?
Yes, yeah, and it looks pretty promising for this person that we have in here. And, uh, he could be a big help, so we're asking for the time that, so he gets on and helps Dennis to get this straightened out for us. Because there's a lot of paperwork to this. So it's not a lot of construction, it's not a lot of, uh, you know, digging up and stuff, it's more or less the paperwork that we see and stuff like that that needs caught up and brought up. So I think this person can really help us and help Dennis with this, get us out of this. So there you go.
Does Megan have anything to say?
Yep, anything else?
I think that's a fair assessment. Um, our office has reviewed this thoroughly. We met with the DEP this morning with some of the board members, um, made some more explanations for things, asked some more questions. We reviewed it tonight, an executive session, and it is our office's recommendation that we do sign the consent order, um, versus the other penalties that we would, um, be imposed upon us. If we didn't sign, I think it is in the authority's favor to sign, um, this consent order. And I believe that the board, um, has had all of their questions answered and understands that and is okay with signing it, but by all means, if I've misspoken.
I thought we were going to have Dennis, but Dennis doesn't know about this yet. Had Dennis, um, put together, uh, what DEP said on the call today was that if we came back to them with a plan about how we're going to implement the things in the order, that they would give us a little more time to get it together.
Correct, so the only change that would be made is deadlines. Um, we would speak with Dennis about that and change deadlines to what you are able to accomplish in the timeframe that you're able to accomplish it. Um, but as far as substantive matter and penalties and things like that, that all stays the same. But deadlines is what we would need.
Right.
Do I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead.
Is, is your engineer involved in this?
Yes, he has been involved in this.
Okay, and do we have a cost?
So, the cost is relatively low as the consent order is framed now. Um, it's a lot of reporting, it's a lot of sampling, it's not infrastructure, as the board said. Um, there were some concerns about the well, I guess, that might need to be replaced eventually, but that's not something being required by the DEP at this point.
You say the cost is low, but.
I mean, so, we won't have any, we won't have anything until it's official and signed. Um, and our engineer has come up with a ballpark, but we can't disclose that until it's official. So, we don't have an official cost at this point.
Okay.
But we have a ballpark.
One thing, one second, Marlene has to go right away, she asked me to speak.
Um, for those who don't know me, I'm Marlene Maraya, and I am a board member for Houston Township. And on April 19th, we had a public workshop with our board and your board.
Yes.
To discuss that lengthy agreement from back in 1996.
Yep.
And we went over it page by page, and we guessed we're gonna bring it back and do some, some magic and some fixing, and then we were gonna get back together and meet, and that hasn't happened yet. And at our meeting was Monday night that we had, we were just kicking it around and because nobody heard anything, I volunteered to come and see if we still intend to do that and if we have a timeline that we might be getting back together.
We will get to that as soon as possible. You can ask the secretary, you want to speak on that behalf?
Um, I talked to Gail a little bit about it and when we're gonna get together after your meeting and our meeting, and discuss when we could get together again. Because I didn't know, you know, we thought if you had something that, that you guys kind of had gone through and come up with a rough draft, you could email it, we could look at it and.
We.
And we did it around our building in less, in less than a week. So, so we brought it up. So that's, that's all I'm here for, I'm just looking to see that we still have the intention to do that.
No, we didn't, we didn't get about it, yep.
Because we'd like to try and have that all done and written, because we're gonna be like into like year two or three of the five-year.
Yes.
You know, reviewing it.
And we will get on that right away.
Okay.
And I think if we get the new license guide too, he can help us look at that some more and write that up.
Okay.
Okay, but we will work on that.
Okay, that's all.
Marlene, before you go.
Yes.
I wanted to ask whether or not the, um, part of the agreement was, it was unsealed?
Yes, the agreement is, I've, I've seen the final paperwork from the attorneys, everything is now unsealed.
Okay.
So it's available for whoever wants to.
Sounds good.
Okay?
And we will be getting contact.
Okay, thank you for the cooperation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, now, go ahead.
Can I ask questions, Tom?
Yes, John, go ahead.
When would this, when was the consent order first issued?
That, I don't know, we knew about it last month when we got the first.
So my office received a draft in February.
So your office received a draft in February?
Correct.
When was the consent order made, public to the public?
It hasn't been made public.
It hasn't been made?
No.
Hasn't been made to all of the board members?
Yes.
When?
July 1st, I believe.
July, better for a month.
That's all right.
Well, when was Patrick? Yeah, when was Patrick, uh, relieved of his board duties in this, was it February, or March?
March 18th.
March.
Who was negotiating?
So Patrick was doing the changes because the consent order involves facts relating to when Patrick was operator in charge and the actions that he took. So we were communicating with him.
Why?
Because he knew of the.
The board members do that, not the operator, and he wasn't even an operator. How can you let someone that's involved in the consent order?
He was operator till us, what, June?
So when? He was left, he was left going, I understand, in March?
No, 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 only the board.
Only the board.
He was.
He was an operator till, what, June, I think.
So why would the board let Patrick negotiate a consent order with DEP when he's not a member of the board?
Because he knew of the allegations against the authority as a whole.
How would he know of the allegations? They weren't made public.
Because.
They were made to him.
He's, he's an agent of the authority, so as an agent of the authority.
He acted as the agent of the authority.
Correct.
But they didn't know either.
So that.
Some of the board members didn't know.
Correct, so we thought that that information was being disseminated and it wasn't.
So what's in the consent agreement?
We can't disclose the consent agreement until it's public.
You can't?
Or until it's finalized, because if we do, then we lose our confidentiality between attorney-client privilege and then we lose our negotiating power.
Could you give me a ballpark?
I could. I'll tell you. Thirty-one?
Thirty-one.
Correct.
And it involves mostly Patrick?
It involves the authority as a whole, reporting, sampling.
That's the operator, reporting, I, say it straight like it is.
I mean, I'm saying it straight by saying.
These people here on this board don't go down and sample for land.
Correct, an agent of the authority does that.
Yep.
Correct.
And the agent of the authority.
And that's who we needed to speak with. Correct.
I don't know how you could let someone that, that it's about make the changes.
So he wasn't necessarily making changes as much as.
You said he was making changes.
Okay, so let me clarify. He was explaining what happened, he was making recommendations for the different areas that we would be penalized for, and I have disclosed all those changes to the board, they agree with them, and it was beneficial for the authority.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
The changes that we're gonna make on the board about, you know, you can't give me an exact cost, I know, but about, how much, how many dollars?
The changes to the board?
Not to the board, to the, the process?
I don't know, that would be a question for your engineer.
Brian.
There you go.
Yes. For everything we've seen through the consent order, everything that is guaranteed in writing that we would have to do is probably going to be with Dennis and the new operator.
Welcome, Dennis, you're needed.
It should be.
Welcome back.
Again, other than, I, I don't know, fresh fees, it's gonna be under $10,000.
Under $10,000.
And let me, let me.
That's somewhat of a relief.
Compare. The fines from the department can be as high as $5,000 per day per violation, so.
It can be.
It can be.
Do you know if the EP's intending to fine?
I don't, it would depend if we enter into this consent order or not.
Last info I had was 78 violations.
And we've negotiated some of those down.
Yeah.
So again, that is why my recommendation is to sign the consent order.
Is there another consent order out there?
Meaning one that they've entered into in the past?
No, there's not, there's not another one for us.
Correct. Other violations in another consent order, not to my knowledge, no.
We finalized the last consent order, I think, 40 years ago.
No, I'm talking about this current activities.
No, this is the only one we have right here. So we're hoping we get this new licensed operator, which we will vote on him in a little while.
Can I ask one more question?
Yes.
Regarding personnel. Is Patrick working for the authority on a part-time, on a full-time basis?
He is, he is just as, as needed.
Why?
If we need him for something.
Why?
Well, at the time, we did not have Dennis.
He's costing you $10,000.
Well, yeah, that, well, that's gonna come to an end when we get our new licensed operator there.
Okay.
That's what it will happen.
Oh, right, it's, he's temporary, as of now?
Yes, as needed, yes.
Who's controlling the state?
What's that?
It's Dennis.
Dennis, Dennis controls it all, yes.
Then maybe.
Where do you, where do you live, Dennis?
What's that?
Where do you live?
Fortage.
Fortage, know it well.
Yeah.
So what's your plan to be up here how many days a week?
As true as I need, or as many as I need.
Okay.
Depending, depending on how soon the other operator comes online, um, we need to get some, um, I have to go over the dweller reports on the passwords, on how to get through DEP to turn the data in.
But it has a word.
We need to get that off of, of Patrick, which won't take long. I'm looking two days a week, or more, I said, I told him, I said, two days a week or as the weather, you know, dictates.
Yeah.
You know, if it rains, I'll.
Yeah.
You gotta, you gotta be here to see what the streams are doing and what it does to the plant, you know, and I worked, I worked this plant for like six years, seven years before, so I'm familiar with the operation.
That's good, and that's a, that's a big plus for you.
Plus in the absence of Dennis, I've been working with him hand in hand. Yeah, working with him to get his, on his test and his math.
Good.
I just, I beat math into these guys.
Well, the work he did for me was nice, so that's all I can comment.
Thanks.
Okay, anybody else here? Lil, do you have any questions? Back there, go ahead.
My first violation was in January of 17.
Uh, let me dig it up here. Uh, let's see, that's 2021. Uh, it just says 17, it doesn't actually give me a month, does it?
No.
It just says 17, 17, 17, and then it goes into 18, 19, and 10. Doesn't give me an actual date.
Thank you.
Questions for the attorney.
Yeah.
Did anybody other than Patrick work with your office, like any of the board members? Did anybody have an active role in the negotiations?
So we spoke with Sharon, um, but as far as substance, it was primarily Patrick. Um, as I said, today, we had a couple board members on a call to DEP just to clarify some things, um, some technicalities that I might not necessarily be able to clarify for them, but, um, it was primarily Patrick discussing the substance of the agreement, but we also communicated with Sharon.
Did Patrick ever bring anything back to the board? I'm asking the board now, I guess. Did he ever bring any of this information back to us?
Not, not that I have seen.
Do what he was discussing?
Can I speak for myself? No.
Well, no, you didn't know until July 1st.
I said I can only speak for myself.
I mean, the others that were, that were in the, in the loop, did you get any information out of him during this process?
I've been gone since the beginning of the year, my grandson has leukemia, so I haven't, you know.
I know, that's why, I'm not, I'm just asking if any of the information.
I'm just saying, I, I haven't been, I haven't been here.
Fran, I've got a question for the attorney.
Yes, go ahead.
We had just gotten through a consent order, and that consent order cost us hundreds and thousands of dollars to upgrade to what we need, we wanted, they kept changing, we kept doing the upgrades, you know, costing more money. That was supposed to take care of the recording problem, that was one of the initial problems in the past consent order. You know, they had us do that and put all that money into it to avoid having the problem. Now why is it a recording problem? We each should go back to the DEP, not on us, because they're supposed to officially be able to pull all that information out of all the system.
No, it don't work that way.
Yeah, so it's the authority's responsibility to, to report to the DEP. Um, so there's a breakdown in communication, I guess, somewhere where that recording didn't happen, um, or they weren't satisfied with the samples at some point, so, so that's what we're being penalized for. It's not all reporting, um, some, some of the things are they're not happy with the samples that were provided, when samples were provided, other times samples weren't provided, but that's, that's the issue.
Like I said, we spent all that money to avoid these things from happening as well what they were, need a recording late, and therefore, if you look at violations, you report it late, so therefore, our, 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 our.
Yeah, if you're late, you might as well just stop going. Okay, anybody else back there?
I, I'm going with what Marty said there. We went through that consent order, we know how open-ended it was for the DEP. Do you feel that any of it is still open-ended, were they gonna adjust as you go, because they did it to us over and over review, when we were on board, went through the first?
When you say open-ended, I guess what do you mean?
I mean, they say, well, let's try this, and if this doesn't work, then we'll tell you what we're gonna do next, or we'll, we'll have to.
I don't see any provisions in this consent order that are like that. It's report this by this day, implement this program by this day.
You said there were some possible issues coming with the well.
Right, so that was something that was identified by your engineer, but that wasn't raised by the department necessarily.
We've been talking about the well for over a year since the drought.
That's not part of the consent.
There's nothing in the consent order about water treatment in the well.
No. No, there's not, not right, no, nothing right now, nothing of that in there.
Okay, because I mean, if you get into green sand filtration, which has been brought up in the past, discussing when we were there.
No, we talked about that.
You're looking at hundreds of thousands of dollars.
We already looked at that.
That's somewhere in the fine wording.
Yeah, no, it's, it's not in there, seriously, I didn't see nothing at that point.
The estimate of $10,000 is gonna jump real high after doing that.
Because the last estimate we did for the green sand was like 107?
185.
185,000 dollars to put the green sand up there.
Just the help that we got from our local representatives, we had been with Srinadi in his office, with the DEP, to negotiate when we needed more time on, on certain things. So I want to at least let you guys know, because you're basically new to all this, that these people are there for you.
Of course, yeah.
Chris Dush, Mike Harmonetti, any help that you would need along the way, or information if you're not getting it from a timely basis, to contact those guys and they will step up for you. You know, I'm not speaking for them, speaking as a group. Local relationships and all.
Of course.
They will be here for you guys, and I know the reason why I want to come here, good reason, just to give you a little advantage if you need it, if you move forward with this.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
I just have one more question.
Yeah.
I just want an answer, if you agree or don't agree that a board member should have been present legally when those negotiations were happening?
No, I agree, and we thought that this information was being disseminated to the board, and we've come up with a plan to resolve that.
No, not disseminated with the board.
Oh, I'm sorry.
When, when Patrick and Sharon were on the phone with you, do you not agree that legally there should have been a board member present?
So I don't know that a board member could have contributed to those negotiations because Patrick was the one with the information about the system.
I mean legally.
Not necessarily, he's an agent of the authority.
But it was about him.
It was about the authority.
About the authority.
He acted as an employee and as an agent of the authority, and that's how we were speaking to him in his capacity.
Who generated the violations? The authority didn't, these board members didn't, Patrick.
The authority has numerous employees, I mean, you have to look at the authority as a whole.
I understand. Who was responsible for taking care of the water samples, checking the lead and all?
And getting the reports in on time.
Right, I, yeah.
Trying to bend the same person that you were negotiating.
But this consent order is with the authority and the department.
Okay.
Chris, stand right.
I just have one more question.
And I've been very candid about the changes that have been made, if they've seen that.
No, I'm not concerned, there's nothing about you, I have one more.
One more, go ahead.
When did the board know about the consent order?
Jeremy, to, to answer that question, and.
It's John.
And John, we had an executive session back in February.
Okay.
Where we found out about this.
When did you two know about the consent order?
July 1st.
When we got the, when we got the new paper.
July 1st.
Yeah, the violations from them before that.
Why it would take so long for those two board members to find out about the consent order? I know there's a division here, there's a pissing match going on between the board, and it shouldn't be.
Okay, all right.
Pardon my line.
You were gonna speak, go ahead.
So you said there was 70-some violations.
73, I think there's a list.
Okay, what do you call, are you talking about the list from 2021 through 20?
Yeah, that's the ones I was talking.
17, I think it was.
Yeah, I think that's the list.
Okay, maybe, maybe the attorney can explain this to me. The consent order, does it specifically state these are violations, or does it say these are corrective actions you must take?
Both.
Both.
Mm-hmm, there's a, a finding section about facts that happened, um, there's a section about these are the violations, and there's a section of this is what you should do to prevent those, or to correct those, I'm sorry.
Okay, when you look at the DEP report for, for the several years, uh, there's like, for example, violation notice issued, report received late, but then this listing from 2017 through 2021, it says compliance achieved.
Yes.
On everything for these years. And in some places it says public notice issued, I guess that's when something like drinking water, maybe they had oil or whatever. So, these violations, is this taken from this list for these years?
I guess I don't know what you're looking at.
She's looking at the list. And what they did is they went back and they did to redo summary.
Okay. Okay.
For example, this is 2021.
Okay.
Report received late, but then here, compliance achieved.
Okay.
I don't understand why they're saying it was a violation, they were compliant, they did what you were supposed to do.
So, right, so what that might be is the, the list was.
My, my, please.
The list was 70-something, and the authority has come into compliance with this number, but the things that they couldn't comply with because, right, we didn't report on time, and we can't go back and fix that, so how are we gonna fix that in the future? That's what the consent order is remedying.
I have a question.
Yeah.
What area of the community had the, uh, bought, uh, bad samples?
Oh, I don't know that.
Does the board know?
I don't know.
I don't know what all areas had it.
Um, I asked Gail and if they would not.
Does Sharon know?
No, I do not know, but I want to clarify something from this board and for myself. This board was told in February that we had a consent order, and in an executive session, I don't know if they don't remember, but they gave Patrick the okay to do on our part. That's the only reason why Patrick did it, and I don't want to be blamed for something that is not true. Franny was in there, the only person that was not in that executive session was Julie and maybe Debbie, because she was with family. So I want to verify that with everybody, that it's not just my fault. We did, we talked to Patrick, he sat here and he told us, and I think Brian, I don't know, you were.
I wasn't in the executive.
He wasn't in the executive session, but I know that's what happened. I, you guys can all deny it, but that's what happened.
And I wasn't there, I don't know, I was on honor at that point.
In December, in December.
Say one more.
Attorney De Vitorio.
Speak up, please, sir.
Attorney De Vitorio, he, um, said he no longer could do any more, uh, work for us because we had gone through all the things with Houston Township with the agreement. He said he needed to look for another, um, attorney, so we reached out and we, that's what happened. In the meantime, all the things started coming in from the AP. Then I, I had relief because I had family, but regardless.
But, um, the attorney did come up, and we guess when it all started in February. Tim came up and met with, I don't even know who was all here, but I guess I gotta write everything down, so we have a record of everything, but this is what happened. I'm sorry, I, if you guys don't remember, but that's the way it happened.
Okay, go ahead, one more.
One last thing, for this, since we're still talking about the consent order. And I'm sure the attorney will agree with me. Please, don't make this combative with DEP. You want to cooperate with them fully, because believe me, in the end, that's the best route to take, so don't forget it.
Okay, anymore before we shut down on this? Go ahead.
Touching on what Sharon said. I wish Bob were here. You can't make a decision in an executive meeting, okay? It's not, not pointing to you, Sharon, I'm pointing at the board now. If you're making, if you're arriving at something in an executive session, you need to bring it out to the public.
Well, I don't know.
To the public and take a vote on it. So you're given, you're given the authority of, for one person to handle something of this magnitude for you, you need to come out and take a vote on it, because not, maybe not everybody agreed to that, or maybe everybody did agree to that, but then Sharon's not in that position where she's gotta sit here and say, don't you remember what we talked about behind closed doors? You shouldn't be behind closed doors making that decision.
I don't know how.
Because if Bob in February had said, we're, we're facing a consent order, we're gonna put Patrick in charge of this, we're gonna take a vote, that Patrick's our representative, and move forward from there, you shouldn't have kept it a secret for five months.
Well.
You wouldn't be listening to all these questions right now.
I just wish we would have known the violations to that type, that's the biggest thing.
Right now, apparently, apparently.[1788.82]
Apparently, apparently Patrick... My water wasn't any son of a bitch. He's lived for three freaking years. Ask me, I live right across, right up here. Do you know where the hell I live?
Yeah.
I had a big spring to get goddamn drinking water. You come home from work and I worked at the garden practice. Take a shower, you stink. What the hell is that? That's been going on for three and a half years. And the son of a bitch has been charging us for the freaking water. Someone's got some fucking AIDS loose.
Okay, the language is...
Okay, all right.
Well, I've heard it before. Well, I'm a little pissed off about this.
Okay.
Maybe with the township down here, they're going to hear some shit too.
Okay, all right.
We have some other things to comment, but right now we are talking about the consent order. But when you're done with that, and it's my turn, you're still under visitor comments.
Okay.
I want to take my turn.
Well, go ahead, speak.
I'm just wondering, isn't Patrick required to tell the board when he gets a violation? And to fill out a form? What's the, is there a form?
Dennis might know. If you get a violation as an operator, Dennis, what's the protocol?
Dennis, what's the procedure when he gets a violation?
Yeah, it usually doesn't go to the operator. It will go to the board or the secretary to go to the board.
Well, it didn't go because Patrick's listed as the person of contact in the DEP. And so everything's been going to him, I think.
That was the question I asked last week. Who was getting the notices of the violation? You just said, to answer my last question, that you didn't know about all the violations. Somebody up there is receiving the notices. I mean, they don't go after the spades.
A lot of times, like the reporting violations, no notice is actually created. Especially if somebody submitted it the next day or something. And that's where the compliance achieved came in. If he didn't report on the 10th of the month, reported the 11th, it would have brought up a violation on the drinking water reporting system site, but not notified. In terms of, those should have been reported on the consumer conference report. In terms of the, anything other like a licensed shopper or not notifying DEP after, yeah, something like that, that would be something that would have been on the TPO.
Yeah, and the leaves and the pipes.
Without being able to tell us what it's about, is it less about the late reporting and more about unsafe drinking water? That is our, I think, everybody's biggest question.
I think it's a little bit of both.
I would agree. I would say it's half.
I think it's a little bit of both, yes. Okay, Christine, you had another question of otherwise.
There are people before me. I'll take my turn.
Well, I didn't see no hands. If anybody got anything else to say?
Yeah. How many areas in the community did they get bad water tests?
That I don't know, Joe. I don't know. They did houses? I don't know. I could not answer that question.
Well, the sample size was twenty. The sample size is twenty. And if two come back, I'm going to have to say this right. If two come back and they're above the limit of whatever they're testing, then that's considered a violation. And that can be at anybody's house.
Well, I was sampled, our home was sampled one time and I think we were like one out of ten homes that were sampled.
Well, at one point, is it one out of ten? Okay, one out of ten. But if it comes back...
Just to let the audience know that Justin and I sample water every day.
How do you do that, Jim?
We go throughout the community and get a sample wherever.
I'm going to hold you up there. Let me clarify, whenever we go out, we get a distribution sample. All we're testing for is chlorine, phosphate, or C-Quest, and that's our corrosion control. We test for iron, alkalinity, pH. We're not getting into...
We're not into the copper and lead.
The stuff like copper, lead, and all that stuff gets sent out to the laboratories. They're qualified to do that. All we're doing is testing, make sure it's, you've got proper chlorine, proper chemicals going out into the system to make it safe. I will go anywhere in the system and drink out of the hydrant. I will come to anybody's faucet and drink out of the faucet.
We touch each community and you'll see the water truck go by from Forest to Caldonia. Anybody that's on the water line, we test different areas every day. Like Justin said, we're only testing, we're not doing lead or copper. But we are testing for the pH, the alkalinity.
The gentleman in the bath, that's her, right?
I mean, yeah.
How's your water now? I will drink the damn shit. I look at your house. It's been three years. I'm going out there to get water. Now, you got your team to just get this information. You, you... Why don't you go and test it, Josh?
When's it going to come up for you to sell it from your house?
I don't want you to test. I'll get my water out, be...
All right, Christine, go ahead. Go ahead, Christine.
That's him.
Okay, first thing, I was at the July 15th meeting. I signed your sheet back there and I'm not in the minutes. So I would ask that you correct those minutes. The second thing is, under correspondence, you have in bold face, the Project County Water Authority is under no obligation to respond verbally or in writing to correspondence or our visitors' comments. Who asked to put that on the agenda? Which of you board members? What did we get on the agenda?
I spoke with our attorney, Tim.
Yeah.
What we could ask to the letters that are repetitive, and it's the same thing. It's like just something we put on there. Doesn't mean that we're not going to, but we're not obligated to it.
I don't think you should ever put anything like that on an agenda again. I've been at many public meetings and I have never seen anything like that on an agenda. Yes, I agree with the attorney. You don't have to answer our questions, but is that the kind of authority you want to be? You are public servants. Don't forget that. Or us users. And that means you're supposed to try to answer our questions as best you can. I can understand the repetitive. All you have to do is say, "We already answered this." Now, I have a letter in correspondence. Are you, I asked for the written response. Are you going to answer that letter or not?
I got your letter right here. And you had a, you stated in...
Now, are you going to answer the letter or not? Is this one of the ones you choose not to answer?
I just read it and I will see what you think here. You went on about...
I just read it out loud, Justin.
Well, she went on about Forest.
Well, let me go finish my comments, okay? Before you get into the letter. I didn't know you were going to answer it or not. But I want to take everybody's time up with my letter. But I think they might be interested in what's in it. Okay, Jim Huff sent you a letter. I don't know why, it was dated May 28th, about the August 5th meeting. Did he sign that letter?
Right here, it's his letter.
I signed my letter. Did you sign it?
He signed the back, um, yeah.
I won't ask if you're going to answer it. We'll come back to that. But this might be of interest to you board members. You have an onsite visit coming with Infomark. When's that going to be?
We have no time yet. We have no date.
You didn't set anything up yet?
Jamie, I can speak from Jamie's setting up through our office. They actually sent her a couple of dates today that she probably should get tomorrow. I have to do work on Friday.
No, I don't.
Monday. Then you'll be, I'm sure you already got it.
Yeah, I called Jamie on that Monday until Andy liked that.
Right, yeah. No, she talked to the Infomark people and as of this afternoon, she sent me a couple of dates that they were interested in coming up. And I said, "Good enough on our end. Go ahead and see if it works for the water." Later in August.
Then also the supervisors, so I have a couple of questions for the supervisors that you board members might be interested in. When you have this onsite visit where these people come to public meetings, have any of you done any research on Infomark?
Actually, we have.
What have you?
We had got some information today. Sharon was on the phone with the DEP about letting them know what you found out. I mean, at depth, I'm sorry.
They just said that Infomark was, that, you were on, weren't you? They, the, the people from DEP, mostly it was Megan and there was another person, not Megan, Lisa, Lisa Baldwin. Said that it would cost the authority, we would probably have to sell and they would dismember the board. That's how they would like to, that's how they...
So, I think...
DEP told you?
That isn't what they said.
So if you brought in that company, it wouldn't get rid of the violations, is what DEP was... Because it would just be, instead of an individual operator, it would be a company operating it. So it wouldn't change anything in the consent order. I think that's...
That's what they said, yeah.
Okay, okay. All right, go ahead, Josh.
Yeah, um, no, they're not interested in dismantling and taking over itself. And that's not what they do. They're an operations company. I explained a lot of this last month to the board. When they're here, by all means, be here with them, ask the questions. I think, not to offend Dennis, but Dennis is a great guy, I've worked with him. Dennis is training his six operators. Is that what you're saying, Dennis?
Six operators.
No offense, Dennis, but Dennis isn't going to last forever. And we can't keep this cycle going where we train people, somebody else from a bigger area picks them off and pays them more money and we repeat the process. Eventually, we're going to run out of Dennis. No offense. You know, and then we're going to be in with him. I mean, he knows the system. When he's gone, we don't have that resource. This is a company that can come in and handle that. We don't know if we can afford it. That's what the visit's about. I told you that last week as well.
Have you researched it, Gerald?
Yes, we met with them already. We talked to them, we met with them. They wanted to see the facilities and that's exactly what I told you last week. Just so they can put a price to it. And the price might be so big that we go, "Okay, well, then it's back to Dennis."
Okay.
We don't know that and it's worth looking into because you can't keep repeating the same scenario over and over again. New operators consent orders, new operators consent.
Well, that's the problem, Jerry, for them, or did they come to you?
Well, I went looking for them.
Because they're mostly located down in southeastern Pennsylvania. The only ones that all appear on Johnstown, which was in the Utes City and Evansburg. And I was looking for a small township that might be similar to ours, but I didn't find any. There was a Bristol township, and that's in Bucks County. They have a population of 55,000 people. The smallest one that I found was Evansburg with about 3,000. And evidently they had them before because they were doing their contract with them. So, I mean, I just wanted to, you have these people coming in, so I wanted to find out what I could about this company. So I thank you for the time. If you want to answer my letter now, that's fine.
Christine, did you find out what the cost was for that, for Evansburg?
Well, that's not my job to go that far into research, okay?
That would be, when they come here, they can give us the cost. Okay, we have to go on or we'll be here all night now.
You've got emails too. I mean, the purpose of coming in is so they can arrive in the cost. That's the purpose.
Well, we're going to get them to come in and we'll know the cost. That's all we can do. Okay. Approval of the agenda?
Um, we need to add to new business. Number two under new business, signature on bank card. Signature on bank card.
All right, and now?
And number three would be, we interviewed a Donovan Allen and that would be us making a decision on that.
Can you hear it?
We interviewed prior to you coming, a Donovan Allen for an operator. So we need to discuss that.
No. We have one more item on, I'd put it in the new business there. We have to clean out the tank, so maybe you can give us some in seats while we get to that point. Okay?
Turn the air on and open the door because we...
Yeah, somebody want to crack the door? Somebody want to crack that door back here a little bit?
I think it's because of the air condition.
Okay, we'll go right down the line so we don't get it. We've got to prove the minutes, the minutes of July 1st.
First of all, you got to prove the agenda.
Oh, we got to prove the agenda. Say aye? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We're going to go to the regular meeting of July 2021. Says July 1st of 2021, approval of the minutes. I have one in my hand here. We got to have approval of the July 2021.
Uh, we need to add Christine Gavazzi to the visitors.
That was July 15th.
I thought that was July 15th.
July 15th, right, Christine.
Christine.
Oh, here it is. I got it.
Okay, that was the July 15th one right here.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, we're going to make the change on the July 15th one for Christine Gavazzi. Do I hear a motion?
We have proven, all of them together approve?
Yeah, we could do that. We'll approve all of them. We got the three of them here, 29th. And we're changing that for Christine. If there ain't no other changes on the other ones, we will make the vote.
I'll make that motion to approve all the minutes for position 15.
All in favor? Second? You want to change something?
No, I said just a second. I'm not there yet. All right. Oh, 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 about the manholes. In the meeting, we were talking about having the manholes uncovered. Is that done, Keith?
Yes. Done today.
All right, and the risers?
Yes. As many as these two or authority have. The rest of them are, we just put the bill back in and whenever they get the risers, they'll come back in and adjust them to the height needed.
Okay, great.
Okay, is that all?
That's all, that's it for me.
Okay. I need a vote for all of them?
You need a second.
I need a second?
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Treasurers' report. Secretary, you want to read that out?
Balance and checking account is of 630, 2021, was 26,643, 91. Total deposits were 86,090 and 86 cents. Balance and checking account is of 731, 21, is 78,226, 97. The balance in the savings account is 256,324, 20. The balance in savings account is of 731, is 256,335, 08.
Okay. Approval of bills?
The total bill, so it's 34,492 dollars and 80 cents.
Before we approve the bills, I'd like to ask a couple of questions about the number of hours that Patrick is working at $30 an hour. His estimate was four to six, four to five hours a week. There's 22 hours in the first pay period, which is two weeks. And there's 22.4 hours in the second period. Is that approved by the board?
Well, I would say it's as needed, but how are we going to do the as needed?
That's, that's my question.
Do you have any suggestions on that?
Yeah.
We don't have no suggestions. How we should do that?
Last payday, he has only four and a half hours.
I mean, I thought they kept track of the hours on timesheets and had those in.
Yeah, they do keep them on timesheets, but as needed is, is he coming?
Why would you demand this guy when he got you into this consent order?
Oh, well.
Well, we're going to, we're going to just stay with that until we get this new license operator in, then it would be over with.
On that question, I mean, is he coming in and working those hours? Or is this being done remotely?
Some's remotely that I know of and some he's coming in because he has been here.
So how do you track that?
Well, the only thing I know, well, he's supposed to write it... Well, the only thing I know, well, he's supposed to write it down, which he does, right, he writes it down. My only thing is, it's as needed, so...
So did Bernie May on.
Well, I'm just saying, I...
It's like that when you were up there...
What we should do as needed...
The timesheets, they always fill out the time...
We were in the midst of getting the time clock going.
Yeah, it never happened though.
They do fill out the timesheets.
Yeah, it was always time to fill them.
Yeah, yeah, they, no, they had a time clock when I was here, they had a time clock.
But they had timesheets, because I...
And when they were, had to work remotely, other than a small adjustment, I made them come into the plant to do it. Because when you got somebody working off the computer, it's easy for them to say, I need an extra 30 bucks tonight, you know. I'm not going to tease anybody of anything, but I know it's a temporary situation.
Yes.
Dennis, you have control of the, the system as well now, Dennis? You can see what's going on with the SCADA system, you have the remote access to it? You know, I mean, you know, they called me last week, they called me in the middle of the night because the turbidity levels went too high.
And it shut the plant off, but I look back to see what the turbidities were doing is when we had the rain. Turbidity's time, we shut that off. And I put the well on. Middle of the night, you can do that, I can, you can do that remotely with a computer. I can do almost anything except, I can backwash, I can't flush the intake line remotely because they have to do manually, open and close valves.
Right.
But almost anything else I can do manually.
So, does he need to have control of the SCADA, or can you put a new password in or something?
To answer that, Patrick needs to stay on for the sheer spite, I don't have my license yet, I can't make a chemical change. If in the event, God forbid, Dennis falls downhill right now, I need Patrick to make a decision to say, yes, let's add the packs up, let's change the chemicals. I don't have the ability to do that, so therefore, Patrick needs to stay on until we get this new operator. That's, that's way it's going to be.
Right. The question is, to the tune of 20 or 30 hours, which you pointed out per page, is he coming in? That was my question, is he coming in and serving hours, or is it all just being done remotely?
I don't know.
Yeah, well, here's...
Well, it's only started last... Well, I was at Outer Banks last week.
Yeah.
And if you, um, I didn't know where you were, but you're on vacation. You cut the shut off to the plant and turned the well, how long did that take you in the middle of the night to do such a thing?
Until I, until I woke up, checked the SCADA screen, looked at the trend to see where the turbidities were, and switched the two over. Um, it takes probably at least 20 minutes for the, the well to pump up to the chlorine analyzer, so I'd have to be up probably an hour. Probably an hour until I got the call or talk. Say why he didn't get his reports done. What's that? Patrick, why isn't he here telling everybody why he didn't get his reports done?
All I can tell you is, we don't know that, but all I can tell you is, I did talk to Dennis today, and he's going to look at the phone to see who it dials first.
Right.
So, that might eliminate that, instead of calling him first, he might be on first, I don't know. But this way, if it calls Dennis first, then calls, you know, Justin, so he can come up, it might stop some of it.
And, and right now, he's working day, eight hour day for somebody else, is he even at, are you even able to contact him, Justin, during that eight hour day?
I have called him, and he has answered.
Okay.
Um, but I try to keep time in the moment so it doesn't affect his job that...
Yeah, that's what I mean, I don't know if his new employer will like that, would like to know that, is he allowed to be doing that?
Typically, my first call is to Dennis, so...
Patrick has done some testing during this time period that he was here.
Yeah.
He was at the plant.
I have seen him at the plant doing the contest, so what he does, and hopefully, we get the new guy and that stuff will be over. Okay.
One more thing about the bills.
Yep.
Gambino contracting, Justin, is that the Kennedy Street project?
I wouldn't believe so, yes. Uh, that and possibly, uh, the dig down here.
Okay, right, that's a combination, because that's over the 25 we voted for, okay.
Yeah, no, that, that was probably for both of them.
Yes, it was.
Okay.
Thank you. That's it for me.
Okay, I just have one.
Need a motion?
I got, I just got one more for the EDS group there.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Uh, we asked to send that thing up, papers up, but I have two bills, one was for almost the same thing, 1,176 for last month.
Okay.
Now, this month, you sent one, it says, uh, reviewing the consent order.
Okay.
And this one says the same thing in meetings, uh, and this one's 336. So, I don't know if you...
Yeah, a lot of that was...
Was run over or what?
Yeah, a lot of that was, again, how our billing is, is it's by month, so if I look at it a Wednesday and then a Thursday, and it's a different month, it carries over to different ones. Um, most of that was reviewing the original consent order and the comments that, um, the solicitors have provided. Um, that was also up here, looking over the emergency response plan that, um, Patrick and Sharon completed already, sent in. I looked over it, marked up several things, and we corrected that. So, that's what that time would be.
Okay.
And the only other... It's the different items in the consent order, looking over those.
Okay, I just asked, because I seen one, they almost said the same thing. One more thing is, I haven't requested any, uh, insurance policies from you, and in your agreement, it says on demand I should have them.
Okay.
So, I...
From EDS?
From the EDS, it says that in your contract.
Okay.
So, I will respect it, and I've asked three times now.
Okay, I can get you one. Like I said, whenever I ask what they said, in that case, the contract covers that.
Contract says on demand of the board to receive them. Okay, thank you. Okay, I need approval of the bills.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve the bills.
Need a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Correspondence, we pretty much went over that. And Christine's? And, uh, I did read that, Christine, I see what you're concerned about, things that were said there.
Were you going to read that?
Aye, I'm not going to read it, I'm going to read, once you read it, you want to read it?
I can if you want me to.
I know she has a concern about Forests here.
Did you say no? You want to say that out loud, what you said about them? I didn't hear you, Alex, what did you say? I heard exactly what I said.
All right.
Come on up here and get close to my ear so I can hear you. Come back here and get close to my ear. Lock it off!
All right, all right.
Okay, here's the, here's the correspondence from Christine. With all due respect to everyone who apparently did not read or, or misunderstood my visitor comments of June 1st, sent to you by email June 3rd. I am very offended by how many, or how my comment is written in the minutes for that meeting. Anyone reading it would be misled, thinking that I was opposed to the Forest Water Project. I don't want anyone to think that I was opposed to it. In my visitor comments, I actually recommended you for getting this much needed project done. The concern I have that should have been in the meeting minutes was about the regular meeting you had that day, as explained below. All of you misunderstood the point of my concern, or you would have corrected the minutes before all of you approved them. I had no concern about the emergency meeting. It was advertised as such. However, what was not advertised was the regular meeting you had directly following the emergency meeting. When your attorney said you advised, advertised the emergency meeting notice in the newspaper, and that it was all right to have two meetings that day, he apparently did know, did not know that the emergency meeting did not say other business would be conducted, nor did it say regular meeting should be followed by an emergency meeting. Therefore, the regular meeting was not advertised. In my opinion, that was against the sunshine law. This was my point of concern, that should have been my comment in the minutes. I respectfully request that you correct the June 3rd minutes. I don't want anyone to think that I did not support the water project. Is that essentially it, Christine? Uh, thank you for placing the audio back on your website, rather than the public having to listen to a private citizen's social media that can be altered. In my visitor's comments for July 1st meeting that I sent to you via email, I asked for an explanation, the settlement agreement you approved on May 6th with Houston Township. At a prior meeting, you stated you were working on agreement with Houston about the sale of the water to them. The recording stopped before the meeting ended, so I don't know if you provided such an explanation during the meeting. This is public info concerning the rates of all users in Houston and J Township, so that the users know the rates are uniform to all users. What impact did this have on a prior agreement with them? Does this prior agreement still exist? What did you settle? I can answer that, Christine. The only thing that was settled that night was, uh, we voted on unsealing the document for the Houston Township, uh, board...
Right to know request that they received.
Yeah, they were building...
It's not on the settlement of water.
It's not on the settlement of water, it was just on the right to know that was sealed.
That's the inventory of how to finish out.
Oh, that was, that's still not really explaining it. The lady that was here from Houston, she explained to me what that, what that was.
Yeah, that's what that was.
The agreement, the court settled that Houston was to pay for the back money they owed, which they did. That matter is all finished. What I did not know was the workshop that she told me about, that you people had, and what you were discussing was, to maybe change the 1996 agreement to you were, you're going to be talking about how maybe you can approve the wording to make it better for...
That's where we're at right now.
Both boards.
Right.
So, you people never explained that. She explained it to me tonight.
Okay, that's where we're at right now.
Okay, go on.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
There was some confusion at the July meeting about a roll call vote, when a member said they were undecided, and after some hesitancy and questions voted yea. For further info, according to Robert's Rules of Order, when a member remains silent, their vote is considered a yea vote for a roll call by the secretary. Is everyone aware of this? Has anyone reviewed the ethics law? There are several instances when members are abstaining, not following the ethics law, which states that in all instances where a person is abstaining to vote, must publicly state the reason they are abstaining, and present the secretary with a memo stating their reason. Why are you not following this law? I will be awaiting your answer.
I would like only, I asked you to respond to me in writing, I thank you for reading that. And I would like to have just the specific questions answered in writing. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Jim Huff sent one too, and his was just about, about everything we spoke with, with the attorney, and why there was, nobody knew, or what knew, and why such things went on. So, I think if he watches my tape here, see what happened. Okay, do we have any glimmin' things?
Send out a copy, let's see if it's sweet.
100 of them?
Yes. Maybe, there is just a friendly reminder, because the bills will do July 29th.
Mm-hmm.
So, I did everything up to yesterday, and before I send them out, this is just a friendly reminder before we do shut offs.
Okay. Operators or maintenance report?
Maintenance? Uh, maintenance, um, I have done old business drainage for Gambino up the well. Um, I think we can do that, and I've talked with Ben again, uh, he said we can get all of it, if not, the major sections of up through there, done within an eight hour day, which his cost is the $75 per hour that he charges us for his machine and him. So, I would like to see us get him in here for a day and get that drainage fixed going up through there.
That's under old business.
Well, yeah.
Okay.
Also, well, on my aspect, then I'm going to head out. The well communication loss aspects, I've been talking with Franny on that. We're going to try to open that up from antenna to antenna, to try to buy us some time, to put some money back towards maybe fiber optics down the road, or whatever. But for now, I think this is our best route along with Franny, uh, getting that opened up, and just hopefully, better signal from antenna to antenna will be, it's not going to hurt nothing.
Not that, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I'm just fixing my sleeve.
This is to Verizon antenna. Can we get better communications off of that Verizon antenna?
Yeah.
To our plant? Because what he's saying by opening up, that's a lot of man hours. So, if it's a, an easy fix by putting an antenna or, and I don't know anything about that, going up Verizon...
Well, we're going to look at that.
To communicate with ours.
Right, I think you're going to end up getting billed from Verizon, because that's their problem.
I mean, yeah, I, I don't know, is that an easy fix, or is it...
Well, we don't know, we're going to look into it more.
Can you do a phone system?
Well, we still have to have that open even to do one of those phone systems, the way I understand. So, we're going to clean it out and see what we got with that point. Okay?
I've got a question, Franny.
Yes.
What was on Jim Huff's correspondence?
He was just speaking about, because he heard the last meeting, and some people didn't know, some people did, and he was asking why the lawyers, you know what I'm saying, why, why other lawyers come in and why Patrick went out and did this or that. So, it's the same thing that we talked about tonight, more or less.
Right.
Okay, operators report, I really don't have an operators report.
Yeah, you do.
Oh, yeah, yes, I forgot, gee, Dan, I'm sorry, slap me. Generally, I have a report.
First trip back here for a year, about three or four years. Uh, the plant is running well, the plant is running much better than the first time I got here. Uh, the SCADA system is working well. Uh, the communication with the wells an issue, because, um, I'll, I'll bring a pic at your next, next meeting to show you how often it was shutting off overnight. Now, the well that works well when it shuts off, because it doesn't disturb the filters or anything, it'll just shut off and then come back on. But, you know, with it, with that pump going up and down like 12 times a night, uh, it, it's not good with the pump, and that's all electricity that's wasted when trying to kick that power back on. So, you know, that's, if you open that up, it doesn't even have to range for that to lose communications. If the leaves are damp, it'll lose communication, so if they clear that out a little bit, that may help until you decide on whether and how we're going to do fiber optic up to there. There's a couple of issues that, that we're going to work on first when I get there, when I, next couple of weeks or the next month. Number one is a consent order.
Yes.
And, and the, the plans they want updated. Uh, we'll get that paperwork done, get it back to DEP as soon as we can, that's my, uh, my goal for the next, next couple of weeks.
And we'll talk deadlines either after the meeting tomorrow.
So, um...
Okay, good.
Uh, otherwise, it's running, so far, it's running well. Jeremy?
Just because I'm thinking while you're talking, when the leaves are off in the fall and the winter, do you have better communication?
Yes.
Okay, good, and you're on the right track.
Yes, we do.
It's worth a try before we spend 10 grand.
There you go.
That's all I can say. Okay. Operator report, old business. CBG grant for Forests? Anything on that?
I don't have much of an update on that, dug up the manholes.
You did get them fixed tonight then?
Yep.
Okay, because I was down there and they weren't done, so...
Yep, they were done, um, again, we still have, we figured there was still a little bit of a lip there, so there is still a cut, like a dusting over them. Um, I said to the sewer authority, if they talk to the township, if they feel like another riser is necessary, it's going to bring up one side above the road, while the other side is going to be level, so...
Now, let me ask you a question, did you do that or Continental?
That was me.
What, why didn't Continental do it?
Well, here's, so, I discussed this with Tracy Gerber. The amount of pavement that, um, Continental put down over it, they shouldn't have paved over it, but it was that. They could technically come in and remove that, what they did, and, and that would, that would be their part. Again, I just, I figured it would be easier, it'd be a better for the community to have those access than save a little arguing back and forth. Gave me a little bit of workout and...
Okay, I just asked, because I think they should have did it, but you ended up doing it, okay. Job description, table that. Cat fees? That's still unopened, right?
Well, we got the rules and regulations, I gave you a copy that we got from our attorney, so you guys need to look them over and get them approved.
Okay.
It's up to you guys, it's in your arms.
Okay. CBG for Burndale, that's still in waiting for meters, isn't it?
Yes, the meters are, they were ordered, and it's going to take 22 weeks, I don't know what status is of that, Justin, I don't know.
Uh, from what I've talked to Jim, uh, he said that we're looking roughly about October, November to get them in.
Uh, from what I've talked to Jim, uh, he said that we're looking roughly about October, November to get them in.
Okay.
Everybody is wanting meters, and it's, it's like pulling teeth out of a grizzly at this point, so...
Didn't, did we get any of them? Cause I thought Patrick had mentioned there was like thirty that we might be able to get.
Well, I talked to Jim, and I told him to hold off on this, because I wanted them all at once that way, because what has happened is as soon as we start getting them, our time then starts.
Yes.
So I wanted all the meters at once, put them in all one shot. That way I don't have all this, well, this, this meter's dying, this one's, you know, and, so it just, I wanna do everything at one shot.
Okay, so we're waiting on the meters, okay.
And, and did we actually get the grant funding?
Yes, we did.
Yes. Yeah, Tracy Gerber gave us the go-ahead, everything cleared on her end.
Alright, good.
Okay, the fiber to the well, we already discussed that, we're gonna clean it out.
Fiber to the well, I do have updated quotes.
How much, how much was it? Do we have a cost on that?
Yeah. They gave us two quote, um, the fiber to, um, to the well, with them installing, was eight thousand three hundred thirty-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents. And then also the point-to-point with the plant and the office
Yeah.
was eighteen seventy-five forty.
Eighteen hundred. So we, we will talk about that next meeting, put it on, because that point-to-point, we said we could get rid of a phone line or something.
I'll get rid of an internet connection.
Yeah, okay.
Sharon, does that include the, uh, Cambria Systems, uh, connections for all?
Cambria Systems, I have something else on that too. Cambria Systems, um, it's total operation base, it's, uh, I could pass this around to the board, I think it's lot, different options, one's for nine thousand nine hundred eighty-five dollars. There's two, um, option for hardware for fiber optic connections, thirteen fifteen. Operation for, uh, system updates for fiber connections, nineteen eighty-five. There's different options here, so I could pass that down, like you just need to keep that.
Okay.
So that's above and beyond the cost of the fiber?
Yeah, I think so, yes.
I have a question, now to save these guys eight ground, how much brush you have to cut to make it communication up to the well, I've had a bunch of trees.
Oh, no, what, there, you could see the old path, actually, and one, one stretch by the long is this garage, maybe.
Basically, what it's gonna amount to is, uh, I've talked to Ronnie Solinsky, Township has a pole saw. Um, I asked him if we could borrow it, he said yes. Uh, we go up there, a good eight-hour workday, we could have pretty much a lot of it, just, all we're doing is taking something about the size of the shelves, open it up, and just go straight towards the well, towards the antenna.
Save the eight thousand bucks, one day's work.
Well, we're gonna do the best we can.
For time being, yes, but in, in, in the long run, I would like to see it get fiber optics up there at some point. But to save money at this moment, this is going to be a Band-Aid or a problem.
That's more or less what we're trying to do.
Is there something besides fiber optics, is there another?
Copper, and that's too slow.
Yeah. Okay.
It's not too slow, that's not the reason for not using copper. It only runs, the Modbus software only runs at ninety-six hundred baud rate, we discussed this. It's like having a four-foot pipe with a Dixie cup of water.
The Zino guy was here that night and he explained all that in forty-five minutes.
Yeah, I, I'm pretty much sure we know what we need to do, just the cost.
Dennis, I have a question for you. Dennis?
Yes.
Can you do communications through phone? I mean, we just got a brand-new cellphone tower, that will reach, it's, it's up there by, uh, Raleigh Cogan's, well, I'm, you can see it from here. But will that eliminate the problem through a phone service?
You can, but normally you'll see sixty-dollar-a-month charges.
Uh-huh.
For like two hot spots.
Yeah, yeah, essentially, you're, you're gonna have to have a plan, just like anything else, you know.
Okay, Gambino's drilling for the well, digging up there for the well. What's that?
Cold and short and short.
Five?
Oh, and short.
Oh, yeah, where are we at with that?
Some of the rules and regu- regulations on that.
I've been waiting for you guys to give me a go-ahead.
On the rules and regulations too, we were looking, that was part of that.
Yeah, we didn't know if he was gonna drill it or dig it, that's...
Well, that's, from my understanding, our boring machine needs a carburetor or something, I, me and Jim will get on that, look at it, see what it needs.
Well, why don't, why don't you get with him and see if he wants to pay for the digging, or the boring, or see what the cost is, and kinda talk to him, he's probably wondering where we're at.
What, what do we have for figure on boring? Like, is there, do we have set price for that?
We don't have no, we don't have no price for that, that's what I'm saying. Your time is what it would be.
Okay.
So, okay.
Where is that location short at?
Okay, Gambino's go up there and dig this thing, do we wanna do that now, or we wanna table that?
Well, he was about, um, eight hour, did you say eight hours?
Eight hours.
What is seventy-five dollar rate was?
Uh, it's about eight, an eight-hour day, um, whatever Vince's rate is, I believe it's seventy-five.
Seventy-five dollars an hour.
Seventy-five dollars an hour, so it's eight times seventy-five.
What do you guys wanna do with that? Do we wanna wait a little bit, or do we wanna give the okay and get that done, or?
Is it an absolute necessity?
It's not that much money.
Can I ask them about, are you talking about cold and short?
No.
Oh, you're on something else now.
Yeah, we're, we're trying to grain some of that up at the well, at the cut.
On what we're talking about with, uh, Gambino digging, we have a couple spots from the plant up to the well, that is swamped, because we can't get drained. I tried to get in there with the termit, and I just sank out of sight. Uh, the termit's too heavy to get in there. So Vince coming in with his, uh, mini excavator, will be able to get in there, get us ditches dug out, all he's gonna do is dig the ditches. Me and Jim's gonna go through, put some cross-drain pipes in, backfill it, or whatever else we need, also, I need Vince to do this, come in, dig us some ditches.
Okay.
Alright, I'm in. Franny, is that in the area where you already repaired back when you were on the supervise?
It could have been, we, we put quite...
Just so you know, if he goes digging in there, we have that, uh, geomat underneath all that stuff.
This isn't gonna be anything...
No, this ain't on the road.
From the...
This is, this is, this is up, up top here.
I just wanted to warn you, there was geomat under all that phone we put in.
No, not on the road.
It's actually starting to start down.
Jeremy, you think, think Ronnie Solinsky could go down, help us out, clean them ditches out?
Depends where, where it's at, with our, the size of our machine, is it?
That...
You know, we enacted that, we first, we billed the hours for, for our machine as well, but, you know, it's a bigger machine, I guess.
I think you need a tractor.
We took the grader and the backhoe up there and did that first stretch with the geomat, and it's all on it. Whereas the old trestle like...
So you, you have a fee also, correct?
Yeah, there's a set fee for, for the cost of it.
Alright.
Justin, do we start costing the pipe also?
No, we have all the, the junk pipe down here on the wall, that, that's what we're gonna use. The only thing we're gonna have a cost in is just Vince digging the ditches.
Six hundred dollars.
Uh, that's what it equals out to, yes.
Now's the time of year to do it, because it's drier, I heard.
Yeah, we've actually gotten a week...
Okay, we wanna give them a limit on it?
I, just today, I had to pull Jim out, because he got the tractor stuck.
We wanna give them a limit on it? Seven hundred bucks, eight hundred bucks?
Six hundred dollars with eight hours per day, seventy-five dollars, it's six hundred.
You can get it done in eight hours?
I feel pretty confident, Vince said he felt pretty confident too.
Why don't you give them like an eight to ten-hour little cushion?
Okay.
You know, in case...
Let's give eight to ten hours, whatever you wanna do, let's say ten hours, vote on it. Okay, make a motion.
Make a motion. Do you wish for, uh, the Gambino to come in to do the drainage of the well at seventy-five dollars an hour for eight?
To ten.
To ten, pop.
Yeah, that, that's what you got, eight to ten hours.
Thank you.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, uh, we got this extra one here for cleaning off the tank, do you have any advice for that?
Um, no, Brian might have a comment on it.
Brian, or?
Uh, definitely gonna have to talk to DEP, normally that requires a public board, by permit.
Okay.
Uh, to be able to get in, clean it. Um, are we talk, we're talking about Burn Dell tank?
What's that?
He jumped way ahead.
Well, yeah, no, five.
Seven.
Franny, you're talking the basins, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, the basins.
Okay, that's completely different, we don't need a permit for that.
No, we clean that tank out, the basin, we're talking about, yes.
We can just, just call around a ridgeway and other places that even birks would know where they can haul that stuff to. We're gonna need a recent lab sample of it, um, for their, for their forms. But other than that, it, it's gonna be eight cents a gallon, or something like that.
So we'll, we'll drain it down,
Okay.
let it sit and settle out, and then decant as much water off the top as we can, so we get a de- a thicker sludge.
Yeah.
And we, you know, it costs less.
Yeah. And I know it needs done, it's pretty thick.
Yeah, it did, needs done.
Do, do I have a motion to get that started on anyways? Get that started on?
On the basin?
Yeah, I, I need a motion, because it's gonna be probably, I figure, what, about six thousand dollars anyways? Seven?
I don't remember what it cost last time, I think it was, I think it was like six to eight.
Six to eight dollars a, a gallon or something?
I think it was like six to eight thousand last time it was done.
Six to eight thousand dollars. I know it's not gonna be cheap.
I, I also think it's already in the budget.
I think it's already in the budget.
Budgeted for it, it was just a matter of, we were kinda holding off on seeing what was gonna happen, if the sewer were gonna take it.
Well, we can't, we can't wait, we're getting, we're getting too far, we can't wait.
Get some prices, Franny, and then we'll prove it at the next meeting.
Okay, how about you get the price per gallon, and get us an idea, and, uh, where we're gonna go with it next meeting, we're gonna prove and get it done before the snow flies.
Alright.
Does that sound good to you?
Oh, big places, do boys ridgway, hey, man.
Okay, what did I miss? I heard my name, I was missing it.
Why don't these guys just take over the sports move, where we always stand in the...
No, you can't, can't do that, uh, we already took it to Penfield, and they already got in trouble. We don't wanna go down that, new, new business.
What'd you do?
DEP issues, we already did that.
Yep, signature bank.
So alls we have is that job.
Signature bank card.
Oh, the signature bank card, I didn't write that down, that's my call.
Since Franny's second vice chairman, um, or now he's chairman, um, I need to put him on the signature card, so I just need a motion, so I can tell the bank to put him on the signature cards.
I'll make the motion for Franny to sign on the signature card.
I'll second. Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I have a question, who else is on the signature bank card?
There's, um, Lisa, Deb, and myself.
Alright, is that, only thing we got left is this job. For the job.
Oh, Donovan Allen.
Yes, for the new operator.
And Dennis, you, you talked to this fellow?
Yes, yeah, talked to him with the, a couple of board members, it's, it's five o'clock this afternoon. Um, he, he's, he's young, he's experienced, and I think he'll be an asset to the authority.
Is he fully certified?
Yes, he is fully certi- fully certified.
Yeah, he's done it all.
He's got all the subclasses and the distribution license, so...
Yeah.
And he wants to be full-time here.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, where is he from and where does he work?
He is from over by Clearfield area, Morristown, so he's not too far away.
For Renova, he's working for Renova right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, and he says this...
Hey, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
We're saying, uh...
Good night. Safe trip.
Uh, so, we need a...
Morristown or Renova?
He works in Renova, but he lives in Morristown.
Okay.
He says it's closer here than, you know...
Than to go to Renova.
Yeah, it's, he was saying it's like an hour and a half to Renova.
Forty-five minutes here, yeah, yeah. So he'd be interested. We're gonna put, um, a motion.
I need a motion on the table for the new operator.
Well, you, you wanna hire this guy, correct?
We wanna hire this guy, depending that he can pass the drug test and the background check. So we have to get that done first. So we have to make the motion to hire him on the point that he can...
Yeah, what about his weight, because...